Ladies and gentlemen, at this time we'll call the meeting to order. We will be playing tonight with an invocation given by Deputy City Manager of the Red Mitchell and the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Perry Biden. If you'd bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with us tonight. We ask for your blessings on our employees and citizens and ask that you be with our city council as they conduct the business at hand. We ask that you be with those that are sick or in need of comfort. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us in this great city. As we approach the Independence Day holiday, we are reminded of how blessed we are to live in this great nation. As we celebrate this holiday, we ask that you keep us mindful of those that have fought for our freedoms and keep everyone safe as they celebrate this holiday. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing we're doing tonight is a birthday fun thing and we're presenting Employee of the Month for July to a very, very special lady that I've had a lot of contact with. She's done many a story time for my little Devon and for that I thank her and Lacy Fleeger and her entire family and friends and work family to come on up.
Mayor and Council, I am pleased to present Lacy Fleeger as our Employee of the Month for July. Lacy, would you introduce your family that's here with you?
This is my daughter Alexis and my husband Adam and my mom Lori and my dad Ty and then all the great people that I work with, Angela Jones, Donna Goose, Amanda, Ellen Collins and...
All right, Lacy is a graduate of Iowa Wesleyan College with a bachelor's in elementary education and English and she also has a master's degree from the University of Northern Iowa in library science. And after she received her degree, she taught in the Mount Pleasant Iowa Public Schools and then her family relocated to Texas and she taught at the Hill School in Wright Fund and she was also the school librarian there. And she didn't realize, or at least so, that librarianship was her true calling and she came to work here at the city in February of 2013. And like all of our librarians, Lacy has a variety of job duties. She orders books, she helps children find information online, she provides excellent service to our patrons and she is really good at all of that. As the mayor, to Lacy's true calling and what she really shines is when she is standing in front of a room of kids, reading a book, doing a science experiment, showing them how to do a poem and all the other great programming that she provides to kids every day. And she's a really special kind of person who is able to put yourself out there, really open up, connect with kids and show them the same enthusiasm and love for learning that she has that she can give to them every day. We are very lucky to have her in our community doing that to us. And on the other side of that, what I see from the organization standpoint is someone who puts the library first before herself, who sees the big picture of what the library's trying to do and is one of the most creative and innovative thinkers that I've seen in my whole career. She will, give her a spark of an idea and she will run with it and give you a great solution to a problem every single time. All that to say, we have a really great Employee of the Month this time and congratulations.
Thank you.
Stay here. Stay here. We present you with this wonderful certificate for the Employee of the Month and hang that somewhere. That may rate this the greatest thing we've been paying your work price for the entire month of July. We look forward to your very special way of coming to brought you through for our honor. And lastly, we give you... Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next we go to the presentation of today's event and we will begin tonight with a ten year pin for Cynthia Pena and White Jones CJ and a big ten year pin for John Pettis. So if you would please come down and bring your family, friends and coworkers and everybody on here.
I'd like to introduce you as a Cynthia Pena CJ as we know her. This is an awesome, awesome lady. She works in telecommunication. She is a 911 operator. So when you call in the middle of the night and things don't go right, you want to call, hopefully you get her because you will be getting one of the best in the business. She comes to work every night, every day, whenever we ask her to come, it's when she comes and she does us a great job. She came to us, she had a bachelor's degree in human resources. Human resources and child development. In 2005, by her peers, she was nominated for the Bill Harville Award. 2006, she received a certificate of outstanding work. 2010, nominated again for Bill Harville Award. She is a police instructor and very good communicator. She who are police instructors, emergency medical dispatcher, hostage crisis negotiated dispatcher and advanced telecommunicator. All those great things that she does and has done, hails in comparison to, she's a mom and grandma. And that's her two greatest accomplishments, I think, and she is so proud. They couldn't be here, daughter's working and grandpa's with the dad, so he can't drive yet. Yet, don't tell me that. But she does us a great job. She serves the citizens of Ullis every day that she comes in and she serves the police department, she serves the fire department, nations will leave you down here with each of you. They're part of your family too. Anyway, she does a great job and like I said, when you call, something goes wrong, something goes bump in the night and you need the police, very fortunate that she's on the other end of the problem because she will get help, give it to you. Thank you for 10 years, let's do another 10 together. Introduce you to John Pettis. John, introduce you one.
This is my beautiful wife Tracy of 14 years. And if she'd know she had to come down here tonight, she would not be here.
Now, John, ain't correct or come wrong, he is the only person in the Ullis Police Department who started with us, nominated to the Citizens Police Academy.
I believe that's correct.
Yes, sir. He came to the Ullis, he came to our Citizens Police Academy at a very young age and he came through and he said, you know, this might be a cool place to work. So he started with us in 1999 as a jailer, PSO and he worked back in the jail for about five years. He came out, became patrol officer, promoted to senior police officer in 2008. 2012, he went to take an assignment with Auto Theft Task Force, which is where he serves us today. 2007, he was nominated as our Rookie of the Year and 2010, he was awarded a distinguished service for the outstanding service he provides, not only to the citizens of Ullis but to the fellow members of Ullis Police Department. He is a, works in Auto Theft Task Force, which means he goes and deals with people who steal cars, boats, motorcycles. We don't see him very often, but when he shows up, when we call, he shows up and he comes with lots of friends and they help us out immensely. He is one of the guys, when he is, when he's with us in patrol, was just an outstanding patrol officer and what we feel will happen is when he comes back to us, I think, here pretty quick, maybe six, eight months, something like that, he'll come back. He'll transition back into patrol where he will take all that, all the knowledge that he's learned as a auto theft investigator and then teach that to the guys around him, guys and gals around him and therefore he will just raise the bar of excellence just a little bit more. Outstanding young man, great father. He's got a guitar, but he won't let me play it. He's smart about that. He's a true servant to the citizens of Ullis and to his fellow officers and 15 years and I say, let's keep going.
And next we'll have two persons come on down and Charles Anderson and his family. Yes, try to walk along the back wall, that would be all of you.
Well, Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure to recognize Charles Anderson for 15 years of service on the floor. Can you say a few words, certainly like, for all of you in the house.
My wife Candy, part of our family, including Marney. He's not dressed up.
When we think about Charles, one of the things, was sitting, was talking with Chief Smith today is, well, who is Charles Anderson? Well, Charles is the backbone of the Fire Marshal's Office. Charles is one of those guys that you may not see Charles out in the limelight and out in the front all the time, but Charles is the guy that behind the scenes, he does more, gets more things done, accomplishes so many things that just does just an unbelievable service for the, for the fire department. A little bit about Charles, Charles, when he got out of school, he went to Air Force, firefighter in the United States Air Force. Left there, went to work at San Antonio Fire Department and was around in the eighties. One of his accomplishments was, he was a project inspector on the Alamo Gun, that everything to do with the spur of the wind, so. Went to Arlington for a few years and then we were fortunate to get him here in Ullis. He's been with us 15 years. He has his bachelor's degree from Western Illinois, I believe, several community colleges. You were San Antonio Community College and not because of grade, but so. But Charles is one of those guys that he never stops learning. One thing I noticed when kind of looking at your personal profile today, you have literally ran out of room for certifications. I don't know if you know that, that the tabs can barely bend over now. So you've obtained everything you need, if I'm correct. The great thing about Charles is, is one thing that's consistent is he's dependable. He's a guy that gets the job done. A hundred percent's not enough, it's usually more than a hundred percent. We are certainly glad Charles is with us and I know he works with Chief Smith. Chief Smith wanted to say just a couple of words real quick.
Just a couple of things. Chief Morris covered most of the basic details, but a couple of things did come to mind in thinking about Charles. The first one is kind of those things of be careful what you ask for and this is kind of one of those examples. Charles is the one that actually told me about the job here many years ago, so he kind of got to pick his own circumstances, so that's not looking out for him. It was one of those things. But more specifically, when I think about Charles, one of the things that really comes to mind is the word being, Charles is a very unique individual. As Chief Morris has already said, he is a backbone and right-hand person that he serves me. He can do anything you ask him to do and can always be depended on very, very well. And I think a couple of the nicknames that have been attached to him since I've been here kind of help describe Charles and kind of how he fits into things. The first one of those is Inspector Gadget and that particular term comes because he enjoys doing research and this is a guy that if you need to find something out about the most, the oddest thing that you've never heard of before, turn him loose on the computer for about 10 minutes and he will have you every bit of information that is out there on this subject. It's incredible. The other thing, he's referred to a lot as Mr. Anderson from The Matrix. I don't know if you're familiar with that particular show and the thing that stands out with that particular name that ties me in with him or ties my focus with him is that in that show, Mr. Anderson, if you remember, is the guy that's always asking the questions and always seeking the truth. And I think that really sums up Charles very well once you get to know him. He is a person that will ask hard questions and will dig deep to get the right answer and part of that's what makes him a show really, really unique and important for the city as a whole. He really puts the time and energy in to do things that I like so that everyone in this room and everyone in the city benefits from it. And for that, Charles, I would say thank you and I hope you do this for me to use enough.
Thank you, Gerald. We appreciate it.
Next we'll go on to the Senate chamber and I will have Deputy City Manager of the Red Mitchell to hit the high plate.
Mayor and Council, item three is to consider authorizing the purchase of HVAC unit replacements for ABM Building Services through an interlocal purchasing system. This will allow for the purchase of nine HVAC units in various city facilities. These are part of our scheduled replacement and are included in our 2013-2014 budget. The estimated cost is $92,219, which is under budget. Item four is to consider approval to enter into an agreement with Ed's Electric Lighting Service for routine electric and emergency repair services. This is through a joint purchasing agreement with the city of Hurst. Expenditures will be on an as needed basis. Item five is to consider award bid 009-14 for the replacement of a water line along El Camino Real to A&amp;M Construction and Utilities. This project would include the replacement of an eight-inch residential water main along El Camino Real, Full West Pipeline Road to the southern city limits and that would be replaced with a new 10-inch water line. We receive 12 bids and the recommended low bid is for $329,423.90, which is significantly under budget. Item number six is to consider award of bid 010-14 for the construction of Brazos Boulevard and that would be awarded to Jackson Construction. This project is the final phase of the infrastructure at Glade Parks and would include the construction of Brazos Boulevard from Red River Drive to Rio Grande Boulevard and the low bid was The developer has escrowed the funds to pay for this construction and he would be entitled to reimbursement in accordance with the terms of the development agreement and certain milestones are met. Item number seven is to consider extension of a contract for RFP 013-10 to LDI Integrated Pharmacy Services related to the city's health plan. The term would cover the period of October 1 of 2014 through September 30, 2015 and includes a slight reduction to the rate. Item number eight is to consider an extension of a contract for RFP number 8011-10 with Weber LLP for independent audit services and this is for a one-year term. Item number nine is to consider authorizing the mayor to enter into a joint administrative agreement with Tarrant County for the administration of the city's community development block grant. The county would handle all the administrative activities and requirements of federal, state and local law and procedures of heading. Item number 10 is to consider Resolution 14-1437, authorizing Tarrant County on behalf of the city to carry out activities funded from CBG Home and Emergency Solution Grant Program allocations for fiscal year 2015 to 2017. Tarrant County will ensure that all the funds are spent in accordance with all program requirements. Item number 11 is to consider acceptance of the Capitol Improvement Advisory Committee's semi-annual report for the period of October 1, 2013 through March 31, 2014. Item number 12 is to consider approval of the city council minutes of the special call meeting of June 9 and the regular meeting of June 10.
Thank you very much. Council has any questions or comments?
Mayor, approve or no approve?
Mayor, I'll say.
Thank you. The motion's been made by Councilmember Sinister and seconded by Councilmember Island Bell to approve due晚. We vote on the motion, so at this time let's vote. The motion passes. At this time we'll open the public hearing and consider Resolution number 14-1436 and I'll ask Mr. Collins to talk this down.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. The Ash Lane Apartments complex was constructed in 1996 and was financed through federal tax credits. The current owner, North Star Ash Park LLC, is proposing a major rehabilitation project for these apartments. The Ash Lane Apartments is a 250-unit complex that is located at 601 East Ash Lane, which is at the northeast corner of Ash and Fuller Weiser Road. The resolution that you're being asked to consider this evening is a requirement in order to qualify for the housing tax credits. In this resolution, you must certify, among other things, that all proper notice was given in accordance with the appropriate state codes and other governing actions consistent with this and that the city has had sufficient opportunity to obtain a response from the applicant relating to this major rehabilitation project. The purpose of this public hearing being conducted is to receive any public comment made about the proposed development in accordance with the appropriate section of the Texas Government Code. Stephanie Baker is here with us this evening and she is representing the owner of the project, North Star Ash Park LLC, who is the applicant for these federal tax credits.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. At this time I'll ask if there are any pro comments. Does Baker wish to like say anything?
Without that through consideration.
Thank you. Are there any o comments? And we'll close the public hearing and I'll ask the council if you have any questions or comments. It's your pleasure.
Mayor, approve or no approve?
Thank you. The motion was made by Councilmember Biden and seconded by Councilmember Tompkins. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Item number 14 is to consider a site plan, number 14-03-SE and I'm in town again.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Lenar Holmes is the applicant for this proposed residential development. The location of the proposed development is at the southeast corner of Midway Drive and Bear Creek Parkway. The property is owned PD. The shaded area would depict the approximately 13 acres that is the location of the proposed development at the southeast corner of Bear Creek Parkway and Midway Drive. Before talking about the specifics of the proposed development, I wanted to refresh your memory regarding the overall concept plan that governs and has approved the underlying land uses within this 200-acre mixed-use development. Shaded in yellow on the west side of Bear Creek Parkway, on the north and south side of Midway, is a Lenar-developed project of single-family detached homes that is currently under construction. If you will follow, on the east side of Bear Creek Parkway in the green shaded area that is identified as M1.1 and M1.2, the M1.1 is a project that is currently under construction by NRP for a 300-unit urban loft development. And shaded in red with frontage on the Airport Freeway Service Road to the bottom of the page as well as to the west side of the State Highway 316 and shaded in red is the commercial zone property associated with Riverwalk Development. And of course farther to the north in the area that is in white is commercially zoned property that is owned by an entity other than the master developer that first introduced the Riverwalk Development. The subject property that you are being asked to consider a site plan for this evening is shaded in brown, that would be the area immediately to the southeast corner of Midway and Bear Creek Parkway. Consistent with the concept plan that was approved, Lenar could have either proposed development of a townhome detached product or a single-family detached product. In this instance, they are proposing a site plan to create a single-family detached product with a rear entry garage that is depicted on the graphic that's labeled as a Lot 3E, which is permitted by right and is consistent with the approved PD zoning. Also approved as part of the PD ordinance is to match a specific frontage type and a specific street type with the lot type that is selected. What you are going to be asked to consider as part of this site plan is consistent with those development standards that have been approved. So what is being proposed? This would be a 60-lot subdivision that would contain 4,000 square foot lots. The lots would be developed with five-foot side yard setbacks, 15-foot front setback and a 20-foot rear setback. The homes built on the 4,000 square feet lots would be, have to be a minimum, excuse me, of 1,700 square feet with a minimum average size of 2,000 square feet. The alleys will be private. It's a rear entry product, rear entry garage property as I indicated. The private alleys will be maintained by the homeowners association along with the masonry stringing walls, the entryway features, as well as the common areas that are included as part of the overall development. The horseshoe-shaped subdivision will have two entrances off of a new street that is depicted towards the bottom of the graphic that would connect Bear Creek Parkway with Mentor's Chapel and you can see the two points of ingress egress off of that road. Each of the individual residential lots will front, excuse me, each of the individual residential lots will have a six-foot sidewalk in front and between the sidewalk and the back of curb will be a four-foot parkway that will be tree-lined and as indicated on the exhibit, those trees would be spaced 30 foot on center, again, consistent with the development standards associated with the development of this type of development. We have been bringing...
Please cast your votes. The motion passes. We've now come to the time where it's time for public comments. Do we have anyone that would like to press the council? No? Do we have a report for our attorney?
You're not there.
Thank you. Are you saying anything?
Come here.
Councilmembers, any reports?
Chair, just another example of what makes Ulysses so great is we have, people have Ron Young been served with us for years, and now that he's retired, he's still serving with us. And Leon Hogg, after all the years, he's still in the service on board. And that's just one of the things that makes this a great city.
Thank you. Many of us up here have talked about experiences that we've had with our place of fire department. And I had an experience last night that was really up close and very, very, very personal that I owe a long gratitude to. As my husband was leaving the fire administration building last night, we're not sure how, but he took a very, very bad fall. He was flat on the ground, and when Chief Paul Smith got to him, he was completely unresponsive. They jumped into action, and our paramedics survived very, very quickly. I couldn't have asked for better care by paramedic Scott Evans and Chris Williamson. And since they were afraid at this point of head trauma, they ultimately tagged on to Harris Hospital in downtown Fort Worth. After a CAT scan, the news was good. There was nothing that showed up on the CAT scan. Now, Don at this point, I have to admit, is very bruised. He kind of looks like Rocky, and he's walking very gingerly, but the end result was good. I want to especially thank Chief Morris. Don has been volunteering for the fire department since 2001, and he's considered one of their veteran volunteers. And Chief Morris came to Harris Hospital to watch over Don and to watch over me, and for that, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Not only did he come, he brought his wife Cindy, who was a registered nurse. So between the two of us, we were so blessed to have our own medical team watching out for us. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Just a reminder of why we live in Ulysses and why Ulysses is so very, very special. Well, since we have no council meetings in the month of July, we'll see everybody in August. Have a great, safe summer, and a happy Fourth of July, and the meeting is adjourned.